We're gonna start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Joan.
Mrs. Issing, here. Mr. Kuchasi?
Here.
Dr. Koshko?
Here.
Mr. Leonard, Mr. Bill Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Dallas Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo?
Here.
Mr. Neiman?
Here.
Mr. Petrusi?
Here.
And Mr. Stupor?
Here.
Thank you very much. Approve the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20th, 2018 meeting?
So.
Check being called for. Question being called. So roll call, vote in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Information, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Kuchasi. First of all, I wanted to actually, we had a visitor last week at the high school and we sent out a mass email to the school community. I just wanted to... First of all, I had a visitor, Brian Meyer, and his parents are actually in the audience tonight. Brian was graduated of the class of 95, and he had him and Tony Aquilino, the school principal, sent on a special thank you to Brian and the rest of the Charlie Company, Blue Max, Task Force, Tiger Shark, 16th Combat Aviation Brigade for their service in Afghanistan. Brian brought him a fly that he dedicated to Pen Trafford High School, where it's now displayed in the hallway of the high school along with the PTHS, other PTHS graduates that have served the country. I was gonna bring the flag down to show you, but it's already hanging. I don't know if you got a chance to see that? There, we already have it up in the school district. So that was gonna be a part of the presentation. But are you ever coming forth to meet the board? You're okay? You're okay right there? How long was he back home?
A week.
A week? It was nice, and it was great that he came up to share that with the school and the community because that's something that we're always gonna have right now. And it's great because we try to encourage, you know, we do, we have Military Night for our students going off to the military. We just added our JROTC program this year to try to, we have four kids take us up on it, but we're trying to, you know, expand that program as well. So there's a lot that we do with our military, and that was great that they spent that time and dedication to us.
He was proud of you.
Yeah. He was very proud and very, um, it was a nice surprise that he actually thought of us, and we weren't expecting it that day. But when he just showed up, it was great, and I know the students were very appreciative and the principals were very appreciative, and we actually sent on a community to all our parents. It was a nice blessing to have for us. So that's always gonna be down there in our display, which is great. We just wanted to thank you publicly, and I'm glad that you were able to come.
Thank you.
We thank you for the sacrifice you made as a family and for your son's sacrifice in this country and all those others who are serving and have served. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
How long has he been in the service?
Twenty-four years.
Is he, excuse me, is he, uh, again, thank you. Is he up here?
No, he's up in Tomwater, Washington, State of Washington.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, the Lewis and Court.
Have you been out there?
Oh, yeah.
That's a benefit, isn't it? Thank you very much. It was, it was an honor.
What are, what are his plans? Is he gonna go overseas again or anything? Is he gonna retire shortly?
I think he's gonna retire.
In June. He's had, uh, back from the, uh, he flew the, the operations in that car, so very, that disorder of road back, so he have duties done, and he will, he's still on halfway.
How many tours he do overseas?
Four.
Four. Go bless him.
We're very honored.
Thank you.
Very nice. That, very, yes, he must have some super fond memories of Pen Trafford. That's very nice. That's excellent. Excellent.
And his mom was a teacher.
Oh, what did you teach?
I taught, uh, how to do the Pen Trafford deal.
Oh, my goodness. That's great.
That's a, that's, people talk about what their sacrifice and that. That's a sacrifice.
Well, we appreciate it. It's nice that we have our scouts here tonight. Are you actually attending the meeting for your merit badge?
Yes.
Okay. Take lots of notes.
We're gonna quiz you afterward.
We will.
It's completion.
Are you both in sixth grade?
I am. I'm in seventh.
You're in seventh grade, and I'm in sixth.
Which merit badge is it? Citizenship in the community?
I'm in the City of Communication.
And they've changed the name somewhat since I was a Eagle Scout back in 1964, '65.
Well, there's still citizenship. There's three citizenships, but this is another one.
Yeah, there was Citizenship in the Community, Citizenship in the Nation, Citizenship in the World.
They still have them.
They have all three of them. Then what's this one, then?
Just Communication.
Oh, they got, they had Communication. Yeah, I, I got that one too. If I still have my sash, I had like thirty-eight merit badges. Wouldn't part with it for anything.
I'm glad you're here. I'm also glad the parents, and actually, at the end of the board meeting, we'll walk out that way. I'll make sure you get a chance to see it, where the flag is displayed.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I also like to thank our township emergency management crew, who included the district on their weather emergency meeting today. It was very chaotic at one point in the day with all the different rain and how the ranges kept coming and all the different road closures. We had up to eleven roads close at one point, so it was kind of, but they were on it, and it was nice that the first thing they thought of was okay with the children, which is always, you know, it always serves us well, and I'm very appreciative of the fire department, the police, the road crew, the rescue six, everyone, and so what is our plan? And we came up with a couple of different ideas, and then it was nice to see that we decided to cancel the afternoon kindergarten because at the time, we didn't know how much more roads were gonna be closed, and there was trees that kept falling, so there was a wetness all the time, and as a road got open, they contacted me and I contacted the bus garage, so there was constant communication. So it was a great team, and in the end, all the kids got home safely, so not on point. I'd like to thank them for that. PTAR, I wanted to, it was a nice news. We attended the PTAR meeting prior to the executive meeting, because it's just been a day of meetings, and I wanted to pass out the activity guide for the board members because I'm very impressed with all the new offerings. And I say this every year to Linda Byers, who does an excellent job. I can't believe that there's all these needs, new programs, because I keep thinking, what more can you add? What can you possibly add next? What are they gonna come up with? What's for? What lesson? What's taught? Can they always come up with something new?
She, you know, not only that, is that ones that aren't working out, she soon, soon gets rid of them. She doesn't, uh, as soon as she starts seeing a negative, they're gone. And she's still trying to work this, a hundred percent self-funding, and she's, it's gonna take a while, but she's, another decrease of ten, approximately ten percent again in our membership fees for everybody, and I think it, uh, was it Penborough, Matt, wasn't it?
Hundred eighty-nine for Penborough.
Yeah.
Word, um, we're down ten percent next year, so it's twenty thousand, three oh three. Last year, we paid twenty-two thousand, two seventy. Prior to her starting back in 2015, when she made an effort to go down, it was thirty-five thousand, eight sixty-six. And at one point, I believe, it was over forty.
It was forty-six thousand when I got on the board.
Mid-forty, I, yeah. She just had the, the 2015, like, the last five years, so we've, we've really cut it over half.
She has things all planned and, um, not, but the, the cinnamon rolls, what was that cinnamon rolls thing, Matt? She said?
She was gonna do a cinnamon roll fundraiser.
In Manor?
From Manor.
Where divorce fees were at?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then she's gonna bring that to the Fall Festival, and they are teaming up with her to do a fundraiser. The Fall Festival this year is the weekend of the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and we have a home football game two the same weekend, so a lot, lot goes on, but I know there's a lot of people, but I think it makes it more fun, you know, have a lot of events going on. It's kind of nice.
There's a lot of activity. Hope for weather cooperation.
Hope it do. And I also like to thank St. Barbara's. Three hundred and seventy-five children went over to the after-party, St. Barbara's on Friday after football game. Three hundred and seventy-five. So that's, uh, keeps the kids, I would say, keeps the kids safe, keeps them, I mean, one more activity and it gives them something to do, so I appreciate that. I don't know if any board members of kids got to take advantage of that, or?
Just a note on that too is, it's not restricted strictly PT students. Any student from any church, as long as they're in high school, they can go to that after-party. It doesn't matter where they're from.
They do an excellent job. Two, two different times I went just for a little bit afterward just to kind of see what it was all about. Very well behaved, very nice atmosphere. They had a little barn fire going one time, and then there's all these games they have downstairs at the church. Colton, have you ever went?
Yes, I went once last year.
Did you enjoy it?
I enjoyed myself.
When this started, I think the first time they did it, Richmond know better than me because I think it's like volunteer, it was only, this is going from about fifty kids going to, what'd you say, three hundred and seventy-five?
I asked Alyssa, and there was another director, made a CCD program this weekend, and she's another school that should try to do it at theirs, but it just never took off. So they didn't want, they tried it for the whole entire year and just, like last year, and do their numbers. They didn't, they didn't have it, so.
There's a lot of community support behind it. A lot of residents, a lot of businesses donate. Even, uh, United Methodist Church up here, they donate money to help cover some of the costs of it because it's, they very like the program so much.
Anyone for that shout-out? Anything else about the PTAR meeting, Nick?
No, it's, uh, the numbers are up again this year for enrollment and the programs that she's involved with. They're, uh, very, very well attended, and, um, she, she gets money and she, you know, there's different areas, and she just comes, I don't know where she manufactured these things at, but she, she thinks she studies them. She does a great job.
Um, Mr. Matarazzo asked me with the new board goals, and I knew, I did a partial presentation where I announced what our goals were. I definitely went into each one, and he was impressed with our, um, prospectus, which featured all of our different goals, and he said he could have just more information on the TDA's and on the soft skills. I'm gonna thank, and George is not here tonight, but I'm thanking Chip for always sending that out because we get a lot of good feedback on it, so I really appreciate it, and I couldn't afford it to mail it if I didn't have your paper, so thank you for doing that. That helps me out budget-wise. What I passed out is just example of the rubric, and this is our staff. Our teachers created this using the state guidelines under the direction of Dr. Jerry Thompson. And I'm also gonna pass out the sixth, eighth grade rubric for TDA's. This kind of shows you how we measure it, just to kind of give you an idea. I'm glad to have Sean here tonight, because he helps me a lot too with the social studies and everything.
Can you define, what does TDA stand for?
Well, that's, it's text-dependent analysis. It's almost, um, more of a sophisticated way of, um, when we're, I don't want to just say writing an essay or, um, how we actually deconstruct a prompt or just analyzing a prompt, but it's basically what the kids are expected to do on all-state tests, and it's also expected to do when you analyze, be all the way up through college, and actually when you do your SATs, there's a lot of analysis that involves that as well. What I'm passing out is actually from Dr. Thompson, and they sent this out the last e-blast. If you remember, Dr. Jerry Thompson is the one who we've been using the last year, and because it was a state recommendation, and she was very limited to several schools. The state actually has adopted her approach, and now it's called the Thompson Model. It's the Thompson TDA Model. So I was very appreciative that we actually had her. She is now booked for the whole entire year. You can't get her again, but we actually have her coming in for our second and third grade teachers. The focus was, if the kids who are in fourth and the fifth grade are expected, the second and third grade teachers want to do this now, to really get the kids prepared for fourth and fifth grade. And actually, when you're writing and analyzing, it's good for all students. When they give you a prompt, I just had an example of the sixth grade prompt there. It basically tells you what the kids are expected to know. For example, it says, authors use characters to develop a theme. Write an essay analyzing how the thoughts, words, and actions of Mrs. Jones and Roger develop a theme with trust. Use evidence from text to support your analysis. That's just as simple as a sample of a TDA prompt. Now, if you notice the first statement, it focuses the students on the reading elements that you're expected to ana- and not analyze. In this case, they're expected to know the characters, how the author uses the characters to develop the theme of the story. The two reading elements are clearly identified as character and theme. The second statement provides students with several pieces of information to describe the task, where it says, write an essay analyzing how the thoughts, words, and actions of Mrs. Jones and Roger develop the theme of trust. That's actually what you're gonna have to do, using the theme and character. That is what you're expecting analyzed. The third one is basically, they always throw in, use evidence from the text to support your analysis. That's always, almost every prompt is basically saying, use evidence from the story. I should have my sixth and seventh graders explain this. I might even do a better job. Have you been learning TDA's?
Yes.
No. Is it?
I heard TDA.
You have heard of TDA. Well, that's good. I'm glad. You better have heard of them before. But it, it, it's, it's a focus. It's something that we actually started last year, um, about mid-year, we got the, with, with all the scores back. They basically said that TDA's were so important, they were gonna be worth twenty-five percent of the English grade. Where at that time, we looked at all of our scores, and the TDA was actually very weakened. So, but it never was worth twenty-five percent. So just looking at that, knowing that this is something we will weaken, it's not gonna be worth twenty-five percent of the scores, we realized that our job as a district was to prepare our kids better, not just for the state test, but for anything. If you're supposed to analyze, um, the kids should be doing it at a different, um, different level, so it was our, it's our responsibility. And, um, this past year, we got our scores back, and I know they're not public yet, but we're very happy about it. We were very happy that we did it, and there was a focus. Scott, any thoughts on the TDA's? How to explain it better?
No, I think you did a good job. I think, you know, the teachers have been headfirst in this and put a lot of time and effort, and like Dr. Harris said, we saw a lot of the results, so it's certainly a good thing that we've done. Dr. Thompson is certainly a leading advocate and expert in this, and we've been lucky to have her, so we'll continue to work at it and do better, but I think we're, we're actually ahead of the game compared to the other districts with TDA's.
And actually, I was watching this past weekend, I don't know why I was watching it, but they had a lawyer, he used to be the lawyer for Pitt, and he was actually looking at the TDA's that the school districts were doing, and he goes, this is what he always does. He analyzes it. He finds, I mean, it's not like when you're trying to prove someone guilty or prove someone, you just can't come up with some reasoning. You have to go beyond that reasoning and thoroughly explain, and he said, this is actually, it was just funny how he tied it in. He said, it's just like they want more. It's not just like, um, trying to give an answer. You really have to be detailed, and you have to say, this shows this means. Well, what does this show? Well, what does it mean? You just can't convict somebody on a think or a thought feeling, so it was just interesting to see his take on it. But this gives you some examples of what a TDA looks like, even at the seventh grade. They always have the same three sentences. It's almost the same thing. They're always comparing two elements, and you're always taking that element, and you're supposed to detail explanation of the elements or structure of the text, you know, breaking down like components and how it relates to each other and how it relates to the story. Every fourth and fifth grade's reading story, I'm not gonna, I don't have one for everyone to pass out, but we, every single story, our teachers worked the summer, and last summer, they wrote a TDA, they actually wrote two, that they can use instructionally for the children to actually focus on how to analyze, focusing on different elements, um, different themes with different stories. So they now can see this every single week when they're doing their weekly reading story, and this is a tool for everyone to use. And this past week, I went out to each school to find out how well they're doing and just getting their insight. Marty Casper, he actually did an outstanding job with his students the very first week at Level Green, his grade four students, and he said they caught on quick, and it was just, um, the explanation he provided me, he was just really taking his student level already, so it was kind of nice to see. But, so we did this for every fourth grade, and just look at it as like, are there soft skills, fifth grade, take a look at it, but we even have the answer in there. Like, if you're not sure how they should be answered, every single TDA is answered for four, so you know what we're expecting. So if you're ever confused, it's out there. So it's just extra resources. So I do thank you for supporting the use of Dr. Thompson, coming to school districts. I know it involves a lot of sub days, but it pays off, and it's not, you know, it's not about them just for the score, um, test scores, it's about them for like, if you can analyze, you can be like, oh, that's fun, or so. And the second goals, we want more clarification on, are the soft skills, and we get a lot of that with the team this past year, and we're breaking that out this year, and you can see a lot more of this for the last two years. But the career awareness committee, actually, in the last two years, we actually had a career, um, committee that met at the high school. It involves students, teachers, um, some administrators, guidance counselors, members of our business, parents. Jim Matarazzo serves as a school board member, Scott Koshko serves, and a member, Tony's on there as well. During the end of the year, it was determined that our main focus, if they said anything, like, what's next? Now that we established career elements at the school, like, we have different career opportunities and career awareness, and we have surveys for seniors, where are you? What is our next step? And our next step, if they said if we could do anything, is to improve soft skills, and that's what we got from all the business members of our committee. So being that it's so important that we actually need this board goal is to improve soft skills. Now, when you look up soft skills, you can find anything from a list of five to fifty-two. I mean, they have everything listed as soft skills on there. So what we did is we took all the different soft skills, and we did a survey with the principals and looking at each one, where do they find like the most need? Which ones do we already hit under another program? Because remember, some of our soft skills, we can cover it under different things we already do, but which ones do we need to cover more? And we came up with, if you look on the next page, um, setting and accomplishing goals, interpersonal skills, organizational skills, time management, and conflict resolution. So that's the five we've got it down that if we had to do anything, this is kind of where we see ourselves addressing this year. We talk about hard skills, or skills you can gain through education, training, certification, on-the-job training. These are typically, um, you can actually, when you get these type of skills, you can actually have a grade for it. Sometimes you can't always have that when you have the soft skills, because on the other hand, soft skills are interpersonal people skills. These are much harder to define and evaluate. While hard skills are job-specific, most employers are looking for similar soft skills in the job candidate. Just to look at some, I know people in business, I'll refer to Scott, what soft skills are you looking to hire your candidates?
Obviously, good communicators, um, folks that can deal with multiple situations and, and how they handle people and their peers. Behavioral, we do a behavioral health assessment now before, uh, we hire folks to look for certain attributes with culture and see how they make fit with us in a teamwork perspective, so it's, the environment now that kids are coming out into, and I would say it's a standard, but there's a lot of organizations that are doing behavioral health, um, behavioral assessments as part of the interviewing process, so that they're making sure they're hiring people from a cultural perspective. So any soft skills that you have, uh, and then we can reinforce them, especially now in the social environment where people sometimes don't lift their heads as, as they walk down the hallways and say hello to folks. So I think any of these things are valuable, um, for our students, so, but from a business perspective, that's where things are heading.
Dr. Koshko, is that what you're doing, is it more soft skills? Is that kind of what they're learning in the, uh, state STEM program? It's kind of saying?
Very different.
Is it?
Soft skills are more, STEM is about the science or technology, the engineering, man. The soft skills that he's referring to is more about interpersonal relationship.
I'm sorry, but they, they do use those in STEM, so I was just wondering if they are, they, because I, I've just learned on STEM very much what he explained on the soft skills. Something very similar to what STEM's doing on the soft skill area, but?
I don't, I don't quite see it that way, but, um, but maybe that's what, um, they're doing, but, yeah, one of the things we find is that these kids are coming out really sharp, really smart, with a lot of good hard skills, and they, they lack the soft skills.
People in STEM are, I'm interested in.
All right, all right. I was not familiar with that. Um, they lack the interpersonal.
It's really, it's really important.
And we're saying, even at the business meeting, when we had, um, just the people who were hiring, we were talking about people following up on the emails, um, just setting things and getting things done on time, and the follow-up, it just seemed like there was a lack of different things and?
I don't know how many people had commented during that meeting that they just want people to come to work.
Showing up, one lady said, just show up, she'd be happy. That's what she told me, and I was, I was surprised that. And actually, even if you're working, you don't actually hire people, you kind of know that your coworkers, when you see, like, what kind of people do you actually want to work with? Just related to that, and if, looking at your coworker, you might say, well, boy, this person could do this better, or I would like to see this. It, it just seems like there's skills that, you know, you're lacking. But, or, you know, we're on it, and I think every school's, um?
There's soft skills.
It might be Mr. Ben telling me to speak up a little bit, but, um, we are being, as you know, we are having, we have it. Usually the videotapes in the different rooms, I usually announce that we are being videotaped, but because we had a student here tonight, I didn't feel the need to tell you we are being taped during the, during the on-board meeting. But there's a lot of different things, and we're just gonna talk about the next two years, and Sean, from teacher point of view, what would you like to see accomplished for soft skills?
Oh, I think it's important. I mean, if you have good soft skills, you can further your career without, as Dr. Koshko said, you know, just by showing up and being organized and, uh, punctual, uh, that's, that's half the battle. And I know with some of my other jobs that I work, it's hard to find people that are, uh, responsible enough to do those things. It's kind of sad, actually.
It is kind of sad. We don't teach it.
You know, the, yeah, I'll just shut up a pocket now.
Dr. Harris, you mentioned about also the work next steps. What are you and Mr. Ingles telling with kids that don't know what their next step is? They're high school seniors, and they don't know whether to drop out, go to college. Are you sure what you're doing?
This past year, um, we started a, um, ser- students' senior ser- survey at the beginning of the year. It's like, what is your plans? What do you have to do? And they counter meets with them, but there are a certain group of kids, and last year, we had about sixty-some who weren't sure of their next steps. So we actually had myself and the principal, Mr. Ingles, meet with every, every one of those students, and we went and found out, what is your plans and what do you like, and then we try to give them like job, career advice and goals and different things. We try to catch it early on the year, so this way they won't, come May, they wouldn't be shocked if they were asked to leave and go out and just be on their own.
So you met with sixty individual kids just to talk to them, what can we do, ask them questions, right?
Yeah, and Dr. Harris, we had a message there, yeah.
It was fun, because I have to tell you, I really liked working with the kids, and it was nice to, plus I like to help, so it was nice to kind of see the end product, where they were. The most impressed I was when I had one child, because he said he was undecided. He was in our career tech program. I kept thinking, well, no, he's undecided, because he has a good, um, degree, and he was in a good, um, class down there, and he said he was undecided because he had three different job offers, and he didn't know which one was gonna benefit him in the long run. So I thought that was great, because I, I wasn't expecting that. I just kept thinking he was undecided and know what, but he was undecided because he had three different offers, so that's just a plug into my career tech. It's out there, so it was good to see, but... And unfortunately, when the students, we do have students who want to drop out, we meet with them, the counselors meet with them. I did home visits last year. I did several home visits last year, just trying everything we can to give them a diploma, because honestly, if you walk out of here without a diploma, it, it's a hard road. Like I said, it just breaks a heart that, you know, they, just whatever comes up, because you have your group of kids you're meeting with, that they have their plans, and they, they come in first day as a senior with their plans, and they're ready to go, and then you have your kids, you just don't want to come in. It's kind of sad.
Thank you.
We do work with them also. If you have any more questions on soft skills, TDA's, and Scott, or I, first day, Scott, because he handled Mr. Um, soft skill presentation this year for me, but I just jumped in there and got talking.
You're doing good. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, are you actually meeting with the board tonight?
No, I'm just here.
You're just here? Because I looked at our food gentleman in the back, and I thought, oh, I hope I didn't put him on the agenda, because?
No, you're fine. I'm just here.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Great.
All right, and that's actually all I have to report. Oh, Will, did you want to do an update?
I can't, program's doing really well. You know, we're selling more meals this year than we did last year this time. And our staff are excited, the kids are excited. You know, still the first few weeks, so we're still getting in the groove and starting some of our offerings and they're going to use the program. You know, everybody's been on boxes this start of year. But yeah, I mean, it's going really well, especially the high school. And so again, you know, we hired a chef from our high school program. So she is pretty well trained and she's going to step in and send you ideas. You know, she hates to live there at the scene, so we're excited for her on the team. Yeah, it really is going really well.
Will, do you still do the focus group of students?
We need to, I have a small group of students at the high school.
Right, right.
Yes, I still do that. I'll kind of throw ideas out to them first, like I'll sample the products with them or bounce ideas off them. That's really helpful to me. And then we do do a survey for secondary students every grade or layer.
A wellness committee also includes, we have a state representative, but a wellness committee, I think we're meeting this month sometime.
Yeah.
Thanks, Will. And Colton, did you have anything to share tonight?
Why not?
And it was nice to see you Friday at halftime coming down the lawn and it was like, you had a helmet on, I was like, oh, there's Colton, y'all.
Yeah, it was a good day Friday, I guess. So not too much is new, it's only been the two, four weeks of school, basically. The musical, I'm sorry, the play auditions are next week and the play audition workshop is tomorrow after school at around five o'clock. Other than that, not...
The Hunchback of Notre Dame.
Other than that, not much has been happening. All the seniors are worrying about their college applications. I'm sending mine in tonight and...
Which, where are you applying?
American University.
Oh, that's right, you had to tell me that.
So that's all I have to report.
Just go in school, you're applying for?
I can only apply for early action to the common app.
We said homecoming is the 22nd this year?
It's the 6th of October.
I thought it was the same.
It's a great thing that that...
The fall festival's the 22nd.
It's something with travel and not much on the committee for homecoming.
We appreciate it and have a good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I forgot to mention the scouts, if you have a project that you want to do eventually, like an Eagles health project, maybe we get to that point, the school appreciates all the help we can get. We've had some great things throughout the year, we'd use our help with the scouts.
I'll turn over the recognition of visitors for Mr. Katsak.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I don't think anybody signed up, so we don't have to worry about that. We'll move on to the regular business meeting. May I have a motion to approve the treasury report and the high school extracurricular fund report?
Motion. Second. Question?
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We have a motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of September 2018.
Second. You may all sit down. Question?
Alright, question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Old business, Joan, any old business? Any old business? Thank you. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. We discussed personnel, teachers contract, and two confidential student matters. We also received information on the current conditions of the roads due to the weather, energy saving program, post office title reversion, and the proposed turnpike interchange. New business, athletics and extracurricular, Dr. Costo.
I do have a few items, thank you, Mr. President. Move to employ the following personnel. Unemployment is continuing upon receipt of all necessary certification documentation and acceptance of Act 34151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Employment is effective for the 2018-19 season unless otherwise noted. Doug Kelly, assistant varsity boys basketball coach, district wide, at a salary per negotiated PTA contract.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
I move to accept the following resignations. Anthony Kovas, assistant varsity boys basketball coach, district wide, effective August 13th of 2018. Doug Kelly, the ninth grade head boys basketball coach, district wide, effective August 13th of 2018. And Sarah Carlson, your co-sponsor at Penn Middle School, effective August 20th of 2018.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Costo. Budget and finance, Mr. Stovall.
Well, item tonight, Mr. President. Move to approve the proposed activities and budgets for the 2018-19 school year for the high school and middle school student organizations in accordance with the recommendations of the Auditor General's Office. Budgets and activities were reviewed and recommended by the business manager and filed in the district's business office.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Building and ground safety, Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Yes, Mr. President, I do have several items. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following change orders on the Penn Middle School exterior insulation finish system, IPUS project one repair and recote north elevation at a cost of $1,000. Cut IPUS on roofs, returns and install new IPUS at a cost of $3,840. And number three, recote two areas around the corners at a cost of $2,100 and six feet tall.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, also, I'd like to move to appoint Dr. Matthew Harris as our school safety and security coordinator, effective August 23rd, 2018, in compliance with the Pennsylvania Act 44, 2018. This title was required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The school safety and security coordinator is tasked with reviewing the school's entities' policies and procedures, coordinating training and resources for students and staff, coordinating school safety and security assessments, making reports to the Board of Education on current safety and security practices of the school, serving as the liaison to statewide school safety and security committees. The Pennsylvania Department of Education, law enforcement and other organizations on matters of school safety and security.
Second.
Question? Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
And also, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Trafford School Resource Officer Program Agreement for 2018-2019.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, assisting.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Assisting. Food service, Mr. Nemec.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Personnel curriculum, Mr. Nick Petrucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers for the month of September 2018.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave requests. Amy Laney, FMLA leave, October 4th, 2018, November 2nd, 2018. Shane Masterson, FMLA leave from August 15th to December 4th, 2018. Gregory Dyer, extension front pay medical leave from August 10th, 2018 to December 31st, 2018.
Question? Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave requests. Catherine Kelly Garris, FMLA leave, October 4th, 2018, November 2nd, 2018. Shane Masterson, FMLA leave from August 15th to December 4th, 2018. Gregory Dyer, extension front pay medical leave from August 10th, 2018 to December 31st, 2018.
Question? Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave requests. Catherine Kelly Garris, FMLA leave, October 4th, 2018, November 2nd, 2018. Shane Masterson, FMLA leave from August 15th to December 4th, 2018. Gregory Dyer, extension front pay medical leave from August 10th, 2018 to December 31st, 2018.
Question? Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resignations. Amy Laney, FMLA, and Terry Pilkowski.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, it's a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following intern assignments. Seaton Hills University, a cooperating school, the cooperating teacher is Mr. Kerry Ettrick, our AD intern is Ryan Greco. It's athletic office from the date of December 2018 to January 2019. Only one month for that, huh? Okay.
Second. Question?
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Move to approve the contract for Joan Weiner, Assistant Director of Business Affairs, effective July 1st, 2018.
Second. Question?